Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the, this is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that our clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough. And for the record, Councilmember Fisher is attending remotely.
Councilmember Fisher, I'm going to ask that Councilmember Hanford lead us in the pledge this evening. We can put you on the next meeting if you like. Is that okay with you?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ever not indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comments. This is item number four. This is a limited opportunity for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. This is not a question and answer session, so this is your opportunity to address the council. Person to the council rules of procedure, spoken public comment is limited to in-person comment only and must comply with standards set forth in the council rules. Comments are limited to three minutes. We will have a timer up on the screen. Information on where to send written comments in the event that you'd like to send your comments in writing or do not have enough time to complete your comments here from the podium, those written comments can be sent to the council and information is available on the screen on where you can send those emailed comments. Lastly, this is a time for you to be heard. It's important that there not be comments, applause, and so on from other people in attendance at this evening's meeting. We'll now begin the public comment. I'm going to go through the list that is presented before me. And as you come forward, I'm going to ask that you please state your name, your area of residence, or association with a city, and then we will start the timer. First person who we have who has signed up this evening is Cindy Mallard.
Yes.
Please come forward. To the podium right here. Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Mallard. I live at 14918 on 181st Avenue Southeast. Had that property for over 40 years. I have just learned by someone putting this on my door that our neighborhood is potential being rezoned. I have a question, is there a vote out for that? Or have, I have, I have not received any notice other than some unknown person important notice information.
Thank you. Lance Bailey, if there are other people who have questions about the rezone, I would encourage you to, Lance, do you have your card this evening? Okay. We'll make certain that we get Lance Bailey's information. Jody, do you have the ability to put Lance's contact information on the screen so that if anybody else is here that has questions?
I'd like to see a raise of hands.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. What we're going to do is we're going to put Lance Bailey's information on the screen if we can do that, so that if anybody else would like to get responses to questions this evening, that he'll be, you'll be able to email him. All right. Next person that we have who signed up to speak this evening is Nick Hanson. Nick Hanson, please come forward. If you could please state your name and association with the city, and then we'll start the timer. Thank you.
Nick Hanson, a resident 14929182. And my concerns this evening are the rezoning of our neighborhood. One of the big concerns is what's it going to do to our taxes? And another concern is if I wanted to live in an apartment, bought next to an apartment or bought an apartment, there's another issue that none of us were notified. That's, that's a huge concern for all of us. We were, we had one person in our group that saw this and had to tell everybody about it. And I didn't really put a lot of thought into what I was going to say tonight, but those are my concerns.
Thank you very much. Next person who signed up to speak is Eric Brown. Eric Brown, please come forward and state your name and association with the city, and then we'll start the timer. Please state your name.
My name is Eric Brown. I currently lives in Monroe, and I'm here visiting family. I am really concerned about, I don't know when this ordinance has been coming effect. It's 1010020. The ordinance is about the 24-hour parking if you are RV or living in your vehicle. I believe all of these individuals are retired travelers, you know, people that are just trying to live their best life. They are not, have, they don't do any other harm or breaking the other laws other than, you know, just trying to exist in a vehicle traveling through the town. You know, there is, so, you know, I'm asking for internal harassment. We thinking of solutions on a 24-hour notice, you know, to, you know, this, you know, should it be a problem, people living in their vehicles? A lot of times people say is maybe education to realize that for people that, you know, understand these people are not really causing a problem might be a little bit hang if somebody parked in front of your house or something, you know, reaching out to the person to have them move or something, you know, would be better than having to deal with the city trying to cause problems like that. You know, and also these laws, also there's a state and federal laws, the Fourth Amendment, you can't seize a person's property without, you know, cause. There are also a homestead at is C-13, RCW is a homestead at that say if you're living in your vehicle, that is your residence, and then you have to go through court to get eviction notice before your vehicle is impounded. You know, I don't, you know, so these, and I talked to somebody, said, you know, it's just because the Supreme Court made a ruling that they not going to put any further protections on people that are homeless doesn't mean that the protections that already apply is not no longer in board against poor people and homeless. I believe this is a war on the poor, and I'm here trying, I've been advocate against the poor for 20 years. I've been doing the walks for the homeless and advocating for people that are poor and homeless and living in vehicle because I feel like cities across the country have made it their mission to take away the rights of the poor and the homeless. And, you know, there's a lot of ways to deal with poor and homeless. You know, if you have, you know, if you want to deal with drug issues, you want to deal with mental health issues, deal with those issues, you know, directly. And if you really care about those issues, you should deal with those issues directly because, you know, there's a lot of people that live in houses that are suffering from mental illness. There are a lot of people that live in houses suffering from drug issues.
Eric, that's the extent of your ability to comment this evening. If you'd like, you can send an email with your additional comments.
I already have my comment printed out.
Thank you very much.
With the laws and everything else.
Thank you. The next person to come up to speak this evening is...
Can I hand this?
You can provide it to Jody right there, our clerk. Thank you. Next person we have who signed up to speak this evening is, I think the, I think it's Delanda? Delcenda, thank you. And I'm going to ask that you say your name so that I don't, your last name, so I don't mess up your last name.
My name is Delcenda Stroman, and I live at 18024150th Place Southeast here in Monroe in the Strawberry Lane neighborhood. I have to say, when we had our water lines, new water lines put in, the city was great at communication. If this is what's going to happen with this, it's going to suck because to date, nobody in our neighborhood knows about this rezoning issue, and that's not fair to us as homeowners. I bought this home two years ago. I am a nurse. I work long hours. I feel safe in this neighborhood when I come home late at night because some nights I do not come home until 11:30, 12 o'clock from my job when I work a 16-hour shift. It's a quiet neighborhood. I feel safe. You start putting apartments in there and small businesses underneath that, you are inviting a lot more traffic, a lot more noise, and the potential for crime because those businesses are out of sight and out of mind to the city and to the police department, and you're going to end up with more crime in that area. Yes, I have the 522 backs up to my backyard, but it does not bother me at all. It is a perfect house for me as a, as a nurse with two bad knees. It's a rambler. It's the size I need for family to come visit. That's why I purchased it. I am not pleased with this way the city has handled communication on this. There should have been more things that have gone out prior to even this meeting in all fairness to your homeowners and your, and the people who live in this town. The communication needs to be better. That's about it. I'm also concerned about the property taxes going up and my property value going down because you put my home right next to an apartment building with businesses, no one's ever going to want to buy it. I guarantee you, because I wouldn't buy it. No matter how much I fell in love with the home, next to an apartment building with businesses on the bottom floor, I would, I would not buy a home. And I'm going to, I have a travel trailer gate on my fence that's in the cul-de-sac so that if I have a trailer, I can back it into my yard, and I can guarantee where you're talking about putting apartments and stuff across from that, people will park in, in front of that, in front of my fence, and they will impede on my property, and I am not going to tolerate that if that happens. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. The next person who signed up to speak is Taylor Rooney.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name's Taylor Rooney. I live over in Strawberry Lane, 15010, 180th Street Southeast. I'm relatively new to Monroe, relatively new homeowner, just bought over here in a really great neighborhood, and I love the city and plan on being here for a very long time. I'm speaking out about this rezoning issue. Apparently, I'm not the only one that missed the info on that, hence the reason I'm here meeting all of you that represent me, and I appreciate your time for that and your efforts. But yeah, I am very much against it, and I think Lance needs to have a bigger meeting with the community at large about such radical zoning changes in a residential neighborhood. I mean, we're skipping over some, you know, other ways to increase density, and there's a lot of this town available to not have to repark my new neighborhood. So I think that is all I need for time.
Okay, thank you. Next person who I, who we have who signed up to speak is Michelle Miller. Michelle Miller, please go forward.
My name is Michelle Miller, and I live at 15010180th Avenue over Strawberry Lane Area Triangle. I'm also here about the rezoning of our neighborhood. I was not given any notice that, and we found out through our neighbor. I'm concerned about the taxes that might increase in our property values, being able to use our property as we see fit if we need to add an extension for our aging parents. I lived, I've lived in this house for over 16 years. I bought it two years ago, and the person I bought it from was glad to sell it to somebody who wanted to raise their children in, which I did, and to be able to retire there, which I want to. I'm concerned about my neighbors who are seniors and the young families that didn't have moved in there, if, how we're going to get taxed out of our properties. The traffic is very concerning. We have only one entrance and exit, which is 149th. The corner there at 149th Station, Staten Station, it has 22 units coming in. That is the same corner that's our exit and entrance onto 179th. That's going to be a major traffic concern getting in and out of our properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next person who we have who signed up to speak this evening is Paul Parkhurst.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Paul Parkhurst. I live at 14940181st Avenue Southeast in the Strawberry Lane area. My concern is, my wife and I moved into that neighborhood 15 years ago, had looked at that neighborhood for a long time to get in there, and we liked the privacy of the neighborhood, and we also like it being residential. We're getting ready to retire, and our taxes going up is not what we're looking forward to. We're going to be on a fixed income and higher taxes. We never dreamed this would be happening to our neighborhood, and we've never been told about such a thing. If we'd have been told about it, we probably would have never bought there because this is the home we want to be in for the rest of our lives, and I see that coming undone with your plan. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who we have who signed up to speak this evening is Carrie Schumacher. Carrie?
My name is Carrie Schumacher. I live at 14921180th Avenue Southeast. I'm here for the same issue, the Strawberry Lane rezoning. I'd like to share my opposition to this. I've lived in this neighborhood most of my life, and my parents do, and so I would just like to say that we all have the same concerns, and I share the same concerns with my neighbors. I chose to move back there for a reason, and that's because I wanted to live in a residential peaceful neighborhood, and I have seen what other apartment complexes have brought in, and I have seen how it, apartment complex was put in behind my parents' house, and it's ugly, and we don't like it, our neighbors don't like it, and I would like to keep our neighborhood the way that it is, and I also would hate to see people get forced out because of this, especially our elderly, elderly residents that may not have anywhere else to go and may have desired to just live there throughout the rest of their lives, and I think that would be a great loss. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak this evening is Robert Schumacher.
That was my daughter. I have lived in the house, excuse me, I have lived in the neighborhood since 1981. We had a place over on 149th, and we were there, I believe, approximately 11, 12 years. And the only reason we moved from that place to where I'm at on 100, oops, 180th, excuse me, is because I had a boy and a girl, but we only had a two-bedroom house, and so we needed that other bedroom, so we, we made the move. I'm not happy with what I hear is going on. My wife and I are both retired now, but the neighborhood is quiet. We don't have hardly any issues. I'm not saying something hasn't happened over the years here or there, but for the most part, it's quiet, and people for the most part are respective about their driving habits, and they drive like we're all supposed to. One of the other reasons that I moved and stayed in the neighborhood is because I, at the one place, I had two-thirds of an acre. Right now, my place is a half acre. And with my physical issues, that half acre is just about all I can handle. I do not want to go into an apartment physically, you know, I'll just, you know, I'll just be straight up with you, stairs don't do me good, you know. I just can't, I can't do stairs. So for me to figure out where I'm going to go, if we, if our, our property gets chopped up and used as a staging area is what I had heard around about way, because there was three, three on the, on the 180th that were being circled, that they were going to go for those houses first and take them down. Now, is that true or not? That's what I had heard, and one of those happens to be mine. So that raises questions. Where are we going to go? I don't know. But at this point, being retired, you're on a fixed income, and I've got a place that's level, property's level, as long as I can keep getting out there, I may do things slower than I used to 20, 30, 50 years ago, but I'm still able to take care of my place. So yeah, if I had a vote right now, it'd be no, you know, just nothing, wouldn't even question it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person we have who signed up this evening is Ryan Lippincott. Did I get, did I get your last name right?
No.
No? Okay.
It's English, but it's Lippincott. Ryan Lippincott.
Thank you.
I live at 18120149. I'm the only house that faces north off of 149th. Now, I'm going to tell you all, we have been through this, my wife and I have lived in this house for 31 years, raised two kids, been a great location. We've been through this twice, and we've been lied to both times. With the hospital eminent domain expansion, they lied to us. With the kidney center expansion, we were lied to. I had the original plans for the kidney center where the, the original entry was supposed to be down here where the hospital entry was. No, they put it right out my front door. So every morning, I got people shining their high beams in my front window, and I got to get a spotlight out because they're playing on their phones, and I got shining in their window going, hey, I'm sitting here at 4:30 in the morning. I just retired from FedEx after 33 and a half years. So I've delivered to all the apartment complexes. I, I've watched the admins area go from these, these old two-acre farms to 60-unit expansions. I've seen what this does. Why you're even considering this is beyond me. You got a double-ended street that dead ends, and the properties you're looking at are on dead ends. Why would you want all that traffic going down there? Right? We've already had the traffic increase just to the kidney center right out my front door. That lot to the east of the kidney center, we were told, oh, that's going to be a community park. I go over there and run my, my Brittany Spaniel hunting dog every single day over there, two, three times a day. Now, we're not going to have that. Right? I'm tired of being lied to by this city, and trust me, I'm as local as it gets. I spent my whole life in Snohomish, my wife and I both. We did four yard, hard years, a hard time up in Bellingham at Western Washington University back when we had a football team. Then we came back here and chose to live in Monroe. 30-some years ago, you had to move to Monroe to get a starter house. Now you're out Sultan, Gold Bar, I mean, further east, right? I, I don't understand what the purpose, when we have all this land around Lowe's that could be developed, this building right here could go up two stories and have all the apartments you want right here rather than take the 17 houses that you wanted to take in this neighborhood. I don't understand what the thinking is in this city. I never have. I have a nice house. It's not like these houses are rundown or anything else in this, in this neighborhood. We've all worked hard for years to keep these houses up to par, right? And I know when the hospital claimed eminent domain, they didn't offer fair market value. They were about 20% under fair market value, and those people banded together to fight to even get...
Ryan, I'm really sorry.
To even get fair market, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep talking.
Sir, you're out of, you're out of order.
I don't care if I'm out of order.
Sir, you're out of order.
I have things to say.
We are now in recess for 10 minutes.
Really?
We will read adjourn at 7:00.
I guess I'll come back next week, and we'll have the same discussion.
Okay, next person who signed up to speak this evening is Chris Peliquin. Chris Peliquin? Thank you.
All right. My name is Chris Peliquin. I spoke last week. I'm actually one of the people that notified all these people that are now filling your room today. We had four people last week, and you can take account of how many people are back there. But anyways, I currently reside, for those that may have not been here or that are watching on the YouTube, I live in the neighborhood referred to as the Triangle, and I hope you receive the letter that I sent on October 17th, which outlines my concerns. Today, I will reiterate some of those points and discuss the efforts that I have made over the past week as you consider these matters. I urge you to reflect on whether the decisions made align with the missions, visions, values that as members you have sworn to uphold. Following our last meeting, I encourage each of you to take a brief two-minute tour after your meeting to drive through that neighborhood and tell me whether it makes sense for the proposed plan that you guys have of apartments and businesses. During the last meeting, Katie, or Kate, excuse me, mentioned that the priority of this area was jobs over housing, and that is a direct quote that you can refer to last meeting, and I question whether this is the right location for such businesses given the unique characteristics of our neighborhood. Over the past week, I have reached out to more than 30 of my neighbors to discuss the proposed plan and encourage their participation in a petition, which I have right here that I can hand to the clerk afterwards, and I've collected 30 signatures with more to come, all of which, in reference, they have not received any communication of this, that I was the first individual to make contact with them regarding this, and every single one of them that I have made contact that have signed this paper say they are against the rezoning of Monroe, majority of which is because of the safe neighborhood, the then introduction of businesses to that safe neighborhood is going to cause a friction, as well as on this petition list, all of your proposed lands that you have on your map, every single person is in this room here today, and they have all signed no, they have no intentions of selling. So with that being said, I question whether that eminent domain then comes into effect if they choose not to sell, to then push them because it's Monroe's agenda to provide these jobs and housing that's said proposed. The last question that I have is considering a more suitable development that was brought up last week in the Dave Hoserlin property. This was immediately dismissed due to traffic congestion, and I would ask that how does that differ to our neighborhood that has a one-way-in, one-way-out? When Dave Hoserlin's property up there is roughly about 22 acres and is off Main Arturo Roads with access to Highway 2, as well as businesses that are surrounded, and that is the goal of what it seems like this proposed land is trying to push is jobs as well as access for the community. So that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have who signed up to speak this evening is Teresa Willard. Teresa?
Teresa Willard, 230 Sumac Drive, Monroe. I do not come speaking about Strawberry Lane. This is the first I've heard, hearing of it. I am here to talk about what we know as certified local governments. Last week, at my own expense, paid for mine and my husband's way to go to Walla Walla to the, what's called now the Washington Places Conference, which used to be known as Revitalize Washington. It's a three-day conference in Walla Walla. One of the sessions that I attended was on certified local governments, which I've brought to City Hall twice in the last 20 years, just, it's still important to me. A CLG, Certified Local Government, is a Historic Preservation Commission that has been certified by the National Park Service. There's a CLG part, the CLG creates a partnership between the federal, state, and local historic preservation efforts. Washington State's CLG is implemented and administered by the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, which is run out of the infamous Simpson Green Mansion in downtown Seattle. CLGs do not prevent properties from being demolished like the 1903 historic home that was demoed today. They do not take away property rights as some might think. They don't tell you what color to paint your house or how to mow your lawn. What they do do, yes, I said do-do, the primary benefits are annual grants, special tax valuations, and technical assistance from the de-hab. To create a CLG in Monroe, we need a qualified historic preservation commitment, commission, which I would, and I'm going on record as saying this, volunteer to be on indefinitely if we decided to do something like this. The city would then need to adopt a local ordinance that gives the local historic preservation commission, commission a means to establish a local registration, register of historic places. Some communities like Walla Walla, when a building gets demolished, sorry, that should be Spokane, not Walla Walla, there is a demo fund that was created so when structures any age are torn down via demo permit, a small portion, I think Megan Duval is there, said it was $250, it goes into a fund that's managed by the CLG and goes towards grants that are used to improve street facades, street-facing facades in their historic downtown. Some of the communities that have CLGs are Anacortes, Bothell, Carnation, Ellensburg, Everett, Oak Harbor, Port Townsend, Roslyn, and even Sky Comish. If we're not to have our own Monroe CLG, we can create an explorer creating an inter-local agreement with the CLG of Snohomish County. I've talked to the CLG coordinator, Michelle Thompson, who would be thrilled to come give the city, city council a presentation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay, that completes everybody who signed up on the list. If you have not signed up on the list, if you haven't spoken this evening and you'd, and you'd like to come forward and say something, please put your hand up. If you have not signed up on the list, if you haven't spoken this evening and you'd and you'd like to come forward and say something, please put your hand up. Come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Piper Brown. I live on 180th Avenue Southeast. I am here to talk about the rezoning. I've lived in the same house since I was two years old. I am now almost 19. I'm here to talk about the effects that it'll have on the safety and obviously the taxes. I've seen this neighborhood grow up as I've grown up with full of young kids that are able to run up and down the street safely. My concern was if we put in more housing and more businesses, how is that going to affect the safety, both in driving and in the safety of what will happen to our homes? I don't want to see any of my neighbors who are older now get pushed out because of this. And so I believe that is wrong to rezone this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken this evening that would like to speak? Are you coming? Are you coming forward? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry. I live downtown, old house. Thank you, Teresa. I'm on board for that. I just think there is a real problem with communication. I know my area was changed and I wasn't notified. I haven't gotten any notifications. I don't know where it's going, but I'm not getting them. So I encourage us to find out what's happening and why aren't we? I go, I get my mail, you know, I get my my water bill by mail. And even on the online thing, I open those little deals. So if it was in there, I would have seen it. So I'm encouraging, people really do want to know what's happening with their, something that affects our property so much. So um and one more thing. If whatever we can do to be more creative and working together with this, you know, our small businesses, to keep them open while we're going through things, I mean, unless it's a real health issue, threatening with huge fines and shutting people down is not the first place I would go. That would be last resort, you know, lot, but work with people a little more. So thank you for listening to me again.
Sherry, um, I I don't know if you said your last name.
Oh, Novak.
Sherry, I was, I was paying attention to your
Oh, my earrings, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherry. All right, uh, anybody else would like to speak this evening?
Okay, I'm Jensen Peliquin from the Triangle. My husband and I and his aunt spearheaded it all. Um, I took notes from last week's meeting and plan on seeing a lot of us here going forward because I think the big thing we're missing here is nobody knows anything. But something that stood out from last week that I wrote down, and I can't direct quote this, but something that was said was we have to make a plan to hit colors on a map. And that's what we're doing here. So that sticks out to me as, these are lives, like that neighborhood is lives, and that's a tiny neighborhood. I'm scared for the other people that aren't aware of this, that would also be down here knocking on your door saying, wait a second. Like, this will completely change our community. Our neighborhood would never be the same. And I have something I'll speak to at a later meeting like that I wrote up. But I don't know about any of you, but would you drive down a residential Rambler neighborhood to go get your nails done? Would you go get your haircut at the end of a residential neighborhood? That's not where you're looking. It doesn't make sense. So there's lots of other places that do make sense, and we understand there is a need for growth. But this is not it. So just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you. Susan, I saw you were getting up.
Hello, everyone. Whoops. I'm Susan Davis, you know that already. I talked to my nephew and my brother who live in Strawberry Lane in the Triangle, and that's how all this started. So anyhow, um, moving forward, I think the neighborhood is activated because of the information. And I would encourage the city to to proactively go out to the other communities that are being proposed to being upzoned and you know, put up A boards like real estate agents do. Put up, you know, A boards that say, hey, your community is is being considered to be upzoned. And if you'd like more information, come and talk to us. Here's meetings, come and find out, um, have an information session available so people can really understand what's going on. The next thing is, I did send you guys uh an email last week, last Friday, and I'm hoping you all had a chance to to review it. It dealt with the three areas, the Triangle, the Roosevelt Road, and Chain Lake Road mixed use zones. And based on information that I had gotten from Lance and Kate, as far as uh growth targets or allocations for those particular areas to to meet growth targets, none of those areas are required. We can meet the growth targets without upzoning those areas, which, in my opinion, are are significantly impacted by the proposed plan. So um, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening who hasn't yet? Okay, saying none, we'll go ahead and um move on to the next item. And I am going to first take a moment. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. We've had a number of years where people have not come to these meetings, and it's nice hearing from the community about your concerns. As I said earlier, I encourage you, if you haven't already, to go ahead and send in comments to the city clerk email address that was up there or to Lance Bailey. I will be talking with staff a little bit more about just uh information that's gone out to the community. I also want to make certain that you've got the facts before you. I heard a couple of people talk about eminent domain. This would not involve eminent domain. However, the the other issues you brought up, like increasing density and changing the uses, those are accurate. And I do want to make certain that the community has the right information. So I will be working with staff just to make certain that they're getting back to you. So we do have your email addresses uh on here, but it would be helpful if you went ahead and sent an email with your address just in case for some reason we have a hard time reading it, as I did with a couple of your names this evening. So uh, thank you again for coming. Council will be making a decision on this in the next, what, Lance, month or so?
November 12th.
And November 12th. So I would encourage, while you can come at to every meeting and speak during public comment, November 12th will be the next time where there will be a formal public hearing on this, correct? Yeah. But again, you're welcome all the time, so that's that's fine as well. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is announcements and presentations, proclamation for David Hose. David, can you please, I'm sorry, we're moved on to the next item on the agenda. David, can you please come up? I'm, David, come on up. So David, um, I'm not going to invite you to speak, but I'd like you to be closer so that, um, that's good right there. So David, I really appreciate um what you've done to put together uh to put together the mural for the City Hall chambers. And we have the mockup right behind Councilmember Hanford over there. And I know that most of the council members have already seen it. It looks amazing. It is a great way to honor um our community where we are today and where we feel that we'd like to go in the future. And this evening, uh, we just want to take a moment to offer you uh just a proclamation that is jointly signed with the council, uh, just expressing our appreciation for all the artwork you've done in our community and also for council chambers where that artwork will hang for some time. So I'm going to invite the council members before we come up here. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to say to to Dave? Go ahead, council member.
Saw me grabbing my mic.
Yep.
David, I feel privileged to call you a friend of sorts, and I have been just thrilled when you were chosen to do this artwork. And the work that you've done so accurately represents the past and the future of my hometown. So thank you so much for sharing your talent with us, and I'm glad that it will be hanging in our City Hall for as long as I'll be around.
Thank you. Um, and Eric, I'm going to ask that you step back about five feet. We have a camera here. You're you're welcome to 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 mill around if you Thank you. So Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just so appreciate all the work that you've done for our city. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council members? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
David, I remember when I was five years old, little, little, driving through town, whoever I was with and seeing the murals on the buildings around town and to this day, it's what I associate with the city of Monroe, um, the murals. And I I just think that is so cool that one individual could could have such an impact on defining kind of the the soul of a community and we're just so, so grateful to to have you. And I think it's very symbolic that you're going to to be able to have a touch of your artistic ability on the on the new City Hall. So thank you for the work you do, your gift.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you so much. Just as Councilmember Walker was saying, I remember sitting in the Hitching Post years ago and enjoying your artwork and just marveling at it. And I'm so thrilled that although I can't do that anymore, I will be able to look at this for years to come. And I particularly love the font, I guess you would call it, that you used for the word imagine. It's really playful and whimsical, and I'm someone that helped write that. I was on that committee. And I just love the way imagine looks as part of your artwork. And I just want to thank you so much. We're going to be very proud to display your artwork every day. Thanks.
All right, um, we're going to go ahead and we're gonna, we're gonna move the sign over and we're gonna take a picture with you. Thank you. All right. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be item number 6.1, public hearing for 2025, 2026 revenue sources and 2025, 2026 recommended biennial budget. Greg Greg Kramer will be Deborah will be?
I will.
Deborah will be doing that. And we will have a public hearing associated with this, so I do need to read our public hearing script. So before we begin the public hearing, please note that the rules and procedures that apply to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report, and council members may ask questions for clarification or staff or wait until another time. The public hearing is now open. I'm not going to read in the rules of order at this time, which are items A through F, but will if I need to later in the meeting. For the record, I am informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council, all timely written or otherwise recordable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of this public hearing. I'm now going to ask at this time that Administrator Knight, please provide a description of the matter under consideration. Administrator Knight.
And I wasn't sure, Jody, if you were, had already incorporated the PowerPoint or if you were pulling up the PDF version out of the file. That's right. I was gonna ask for the PDF version in the meeting folder. You can go to the next slide. So this is the public hearing on, the second public hearing on the city's budget. And like the first public hearing that was held last week, this is going to be the big picture overview of the city's budget. We have later on in tonight's meeting, the deeper dive um into each one of the department budgets. So this presentation is going to be focused on the first 34 pages of the mayor's recommended budget, pages 1 through 34. We are, as we are reviewing the budget, we are finding that there are some things where the numbers don't necessarily all add up together, but those are just minor, they're not material to the full budget. If you do find some of those as you're reading through the budget, please just either bring them to my attention or Greg's attention. This is a a big budget. It's a two year budget. Typically, in the past, of course, we've had Becky Hassard, our Cracker Jack, Finance Director, and we are doing our best to fill her shoes since she's moved on. So what we're focused in here today is um second reading of the mayor's recommended budget. So next slide, and we'll talk about a few of the highlights. So as in past budgets that the mayor has brought forward for council consideration, it is built on a set of risk averse estimates. And we'll be talking more about those estimates as we go through the the public hearing presentation. I mean, it does fully fund um the contingency reserves and debt reserves for the municipal campus bonds. It assumes about $12.5 million in bonds to support the bio solids treatment plant project. And you will be seeing that come before you later on in tonight's meeting. So that is a a strong connection between what's in the budget and the actions that council is currently taking. It does advance a number of projects that have been on the council's strategic priority list for a extended period. Those include Tromley Park or North Hill Park, rail crossing safety, a signal at the intersection of 179th and 17th and 147th Avenue. It also funds neighborhood traffic safety programs. That's a program that the council had taken a look at earlier in the year and requested some additional funding and some changes to that program. So that is included in the mayor's recommended budget. It does use the city's banked capacity and the 1% property tax to fund um one additional park maintenance worker position. Again, that was something that city council had discussed with mayor and staff at two uh special workshops, one in January and one in April. It supports a safety net to serve our most vulnerable population in our community, members of our community. So that includes all of our human services investments. And I do have a slide that talks about the the partnerships that the city has with a number of nonprofit service providers around our community to advance that publics, that to support that safety net. It invests in information technology to improve efficiency and increase transparency. We've been talking about an investment in the city's permit tracking software system, so that is included in the mayor's recommended budget. That would allow individuals then who submit permits to the city to be able to see where their permit is in the system without having to contact City Hall directly. Other people could also see those permits as well. So if a neighbor is wondering what's going on next door, they can look that up and see what's happening, see what building permits have been pulled for a project. And then finally, it um provides an opportunity for the city council and mayor and staff to continue to advocate for community priorities at the state and federal level. So it does include funding um for both advocacy in Olympia and in Washington DC. And then finally, it publicly launches the city's new logo and brand. So you'll be seeing um that brand and logo around the community in 2025 and 2026. So next slide. The mayor's recommended budget is built um around the Imagine Monroe vision statement and the city's strategic priorities. Again, we discussed um the council's priorities at workshops in January and in April. And we made some changes to those priorities. As you can see across the top of those strategic priorities, they're built on the Imagine Monroe As you can see across the top of those strategic priorities, they're built on the Imagine Monroe statements. Some of the investments that we're making are maintaining and modernizing inclusive park facilities. So there's investment in new park facilities. It invests in tourism promotion and marketing. So we're drawing people in to shop, play, and stay in Monroe. It invests in infrastructure that improves connections between people. That was very important when we were developing Imagine Monroe. And then it modernizes city operations and services through a number of tech and technology and innovations in personnel, the IT strategic plan, updating the permit tracking system, and an enterprise resource program request for proposal. It works to strengthen partnerships. And then finally, it ensures that Monroe is a safe place through a number of investments. So next slide. I mentioned partnerships. Partnerships have always been extremely important to the city council and the Monroe community. And you can see there that we've got a long list of partners that we continue to support as a part of the mayor's recommended budget. Just a couple to pull out, Evergreen Health Recovery Center, the Monroe Food Bank, Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center. It includes both a land lease and support for the shuttle bus. The school district, we share the cost for the school resource officer. We do work with Snohomish County to provide an embedded social worker with our police department for community outreach. We also work with St. Vincent de Paul, Take the Next Step for Rent and Mortgage Assistance. Volunteers of America is providing our mobile mental health. And then they're also working with us with housing vouchers. That was a contract that the council just recently approved. So next slide. Looking at then how this budget is built and the budget assumptions, we've talked about these a number of times, but just to recap, we are looking at a cost of living adjustment of 3.8%. That's the CPIU, Seattle Tacoma Bellevue, June to June, Consumer Price Index. The September implicit price deflator was 2.57. So under state rules, we could take either the lesser of 1% or 2.57, the price, implicit price deflator. So 1% was lower, and so that's what the budget is built on. It's built on the 1%. We are anticipating that we'll have a national economic slowdown, and that will have local impacts. We are showing that retail sales and construction sales tax will continue to remain flat over the biennial budget. And then we're anticipating that the Federal Reserve will continue to lower interest rates, which will affect then the interest rate earnings that we have. That may result in a additional building permit revenue, but we're not anticipating that as a part of this budget. We are, we will be seeing a population increase. Typically in Monroe, going back more than 40 years, it's been around 1% or 2%, I mean 1% to 1.2% over the long run. Some years, of course, we see a spike in development, depending upon what the economy looks like. But over time, it's pretty steady. And so we're anticipating that we'll have about 21,000 people in the year 2026, and then 180 housing starts, which is exactly the same number of housing starts that we anticipated for the '23 and '24 budget years. We're just anticipating those will move forward in '25 and '26. So more budget assumptions. Again, we are expecting that assessed values will increase by 4%. We know the number for '25, but we're anticipating that for '26. But of course, we're limited by state law to only increasing property taxes by 1% without a voter-approved levy lid lift. So we are currently capped at 1%, even as assessed values go up. We know for 2025 that the value of new construction is $69 million. That'll generate about $60,000 in property taxes, and that our overall property tax is going to be about $8.6 million, and that includes the 1% and the bank capacity. The rate adjustments for '25 are already established by resolution 22, 2019. So our water rate adjustment will be 3%, stormwater will be 10, and the sewer will not have an increase in 2025. We will have a rate study that is scheduled in 2025, and so we'll expect to adopt a new six-year rate study, I mean, a new six-year set of rates for 2026 through 2031. So next slide. So the city has 22 funds total, and you see them listed there on that slide, and they're broken up into three categories. Taxes that we collect, and those include property taxes and sales taxes, real estate excise taxes, liquor taxes. I mean, there's a whole range of taxes that the city collects that are shared with the state and with the county and other taxing jurisdictions. And rates that we receive, so these are water, sewer, stormwater rates. So those are operating funds. They're kept separate from the general fund and special revenue funds. And then what our past finance director lovingly called OPM, or other people's money. And basically, that's just the pass-through for our school impact fees. So that's an account, it's a fiduciary account. We just collect the money, and then we turn it over to the school district. So it's just a pass-through for us. So government agencies use funds in order to track the amount of money assigned to different purposes and uses. And we use those funds because it places the focus on accountability rather than profitability. So anybody can open up any of these funds and really understand kind of where the city is planning to spend its money. And I'll go into more in-depth discussion about those funds during the discussion portion of today's meeting. So next slide. So for debt service, we're anticipating that we will issue about $17.2 million in new debt in 2025 and '26. So you can see it broken down there. $15.2 million of that is going to go towards the sewer capital fund. That's that BioSolids Project, CIP5. And there will also be then $2.7 million in a DOE loan. The total project cost is about $30, $31 million. So we're only borrowing a small portion of that overall cost. The rest of the money used to support that project is actually coming from ratepayers that's been collected and saved leading up to this project. And then target reserve, we are meeting that. It's two to three years, and currently we have about two and a half years of debt payments reserved in that fund. So that's what we're looking forward into '25 and '26 for debt. Next slide. So getting into the, getting into the numbers, if you're looking at all revenues, and this is all revenues across all funds, it includes, you know, taxes, which are some of the largest portion of what we collect. It's about 17% total. And as I mentioned before, that includes property taxes and sales taxes, marijuana, liquor, and excise taxes. Charges for service include utility rates, permits, licenses, and internal service funds. And then the general fund portion of that is about $4 million. We've got debt proceeds. We already talked about that. That $17.2 million that you see there is for that wastewater treatment plant project. And then we have transfers in of about $13 million. And in the mayor's recommended budget, you can track all those transfers. Those are the transfers between funds, and those are all listed on page 24. So all total, the entire city budget is about $200,829,000. But again, a good portion of that is really those charges for service, which is $69.9 million. That's for the enterprise funds. So next slide. So all expenditures on the expenditure side of the house, you can see that the largest expense is the city's capital budget. Those are the investments that we made. And again, the largest expense in the capital budget is that wastewater treatment plant, BioSolid Project, which is about $31 million. So out of that $63 million in capital, $31 million is just that one single project. The debt service section that you see there, that $5.8 million, that's interest and principal, and that's for City Hall and the Monroe Coordination Center, the public workshop. That's the debt service that we currently have. And then intergovernmental, those are grants that we receive. And then again, you can see all of those transfers out. That's money that's moving, for example, from real estate excise tax funds, right? That's money that we collect on the sale of every property, and that's going then to pay for capital projects. So it gets receipted into one fund, and then it gets transferred out to another fund. And all of those transfers, again, are listed on page 24. So next slide, that's the very, very big picture overview. Now drilling down just a little bit into the general fund overview. The general fund, that's the fund that houses all the revenues and expenditures, which aren't accounted for in the utility funds or in capital funds. And it supports kind of the general government services. So the clerk's office, community development, our court, executive finance, human resources, human services, information technology, legal parks, and police. Those are all the funds that are supported by the general fund. And you can see that the largest portion of revenue that we collect is taxes. That's not property taxes alone. It includes then retail sales taxes, and it also includes then the utility taxes that get paid. And I mentioned excise taxes and other taxes that come into that. Sometimes people see that number, and they think the city's collecting $31 million in property taxes, and that's not the case. And then you can work your way down. You can see the next highest revenue source that we collect are the charges for services, and followed then by intergovernmental, which are, in general, those are the grants that we receive. These are monies coming from other governments to the city of Monroe to support services that we provide. So next slide. So the levy rate, I'll go back one slide, I'm sorry, to the revenues. Thank you. I want to point out that if you take a look at 2023 and 2024 projected revenues, you can see that we are expecting to receive as a part of this biennium about $49 million total revenue. And that in '25 and '26, that's actually going to be less than in '23 and '24, only $48.6 million. And a part of that change really is that the CARES Act and ARP money that we've received is finally, this is the final year for expending those funds. So those funds are going to be fully expended at the end of '23 and '24. And so you can see with the beginning fund balance that that beginning fund balance went up as a result of the federal money that we received, and now it's coming back down again to where we would normally expect to see it. So that, I think, is one of the big changes. And then again, looking at the retail sales tax, that's expected to be flat over the next biennium. So less money anticipated in revenues in the coming budget year than in the past budget year. All right, next slide. So the levy rate, the city's levy rate, as you can see on this table, has been falling as assessed values have been rising, and the city is capped at the 1%. So again, we're expecting that assessed value overall is going to go up 4%, but the city can only collect an additional 1% in property taxes, and that causes that levy rate to fall. So the levy rate for 2025 is going to be 2 cents higher than in 2024, but less than the rate that the city collected in 2022. So in 2022, the city had a levy rate of $1.02 per thousand of assessed value, and in 2025, we're expecting that to be 88 cents. That's without the voter-approved levy lid lift. So this budget is built without the lid lift, the voter-approved lid lift. It does include taking the banked capacity to hire the parks' maintenance worker, which is why the difference between 2025 without bank capacity and 2025 with banked capacity. So that's the effect of adding an additional $154,000 into the budget. So next slide. So for property taxes, this just provides the table that shows how property taxes are calculated. The current levy is just a little over $4 million. The 1%, which is what we're capped at, we can only collect an additional $40,000 in property taxes next year. We do collect an additional almost $60,000 as a result of new construction. That was shown in a previous slide. So if you add the bank capacity of $153,000 to fund the parks' maintenance worker, you know, plus the equipment that they need and the supplies that they're going to be using, the total property tax that is included in the mayor's recommended budget is approximately, well, a little bit more than $4.2 million, almost $4.3 million. Next slide. So I know the council had requested that we add this dollar bill back into the mayor's recommended budget, so it will be included in the final budget. I know this is a great way to really help community members understand where the city falls in their property tax bill. So the Monroe portion of the 2024 tax bill is just a little under 11%, 10.94%, which means that we collect about 11 cents for every dollar of property tax collected. And the remainder goes to other jurisdictions. So you can see that the state of Washington collects about 28% of our tax bill, followed by the Monroe School District at 27. Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue collects more than the city does. They're a little bit over, I think that's 18%, I can't quite see on there. 19.77%, I see that. And then the other taxing districts that fall down below the city include the county, the library, and the hospital district. Next slide. So looking at the general fund by the numbers, the general fund supports just a little over 82 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees, or approximately about 58% of the city's total personnel costs are carried by the general fund. Professional services, that's the second highest expenditure. This includes grant-funded services such as our mobile mental health recovery services, peer support, and case management. So those are all covered under professional services. This also includes support from software companies to implement permit tracking and our personnel modules included in the mayor's recommended budget. And then you can see the transfer out of about $276,000, and that's for debt service on city facilities. So that's what makes up the general fund. So next slide. So on the expenditure side of the house then, again, it adds up to that $48 million. The largest expenditure is for public safety services, which is about 45% of the city's budget, general fund budget, or about $21.8 million. Parks operations and maintenance is the second highest expenditure at $5.4 million, and then community development at $4.9. And that includes services for planning, building, plan review, and code enforcement. So those are all included in community development. I mentioned earlier that our ARP expenditures will draw to a close at the end of this year. The city collected money, and the majority of that we gave away to our business community, our nonprofits, and to those entities and individuals who provided opportunities for community members to come back and experience special events. Information technology, we're really starting to see that the internal service funds, so the information technology fund, fleet and equipment and facilities funds, those are really, those costs are really increasing. And because they're internal service funds, a portion of each one of those funds gets charged off to the general fund. And so when I was looking through general fund expenditures, you can really begin to see the impacts of those expenses. It's just more expensive to, you know, purchase equipment, and more expensive to maintain it, and more expensive to maintain the city facilities. And so those really beginning to have an impact on the general fund. And I'll go into more detail on those funds when we go through the discussion portion of the public hearing. So next slide. We're getting near the end. The city council had asked several years ago to see the long-range forecast, both for the general fund and for the utilities. And so this is the long-range forecast going out six years. There's the note at the bottom of that, which says, notes, because the ending fund balance does not include the, two notes, it does not include the contingency fund, and red in the out years does not mean the city will run out of money. Our previous finance director always liked to use the analogy that a city budget is like a vehicle. You put gas in it at the beginning of your trip, and at some point, you have to gas it back up again. And so these are the conversations that we have with the city council when we start the budget process and talk about strategic priorities are, you know, what is it that the community is most interested in seeing? And, you know, what is it going to take for us to get there? Sometimes it means that we change programs, or we reallocate funding from one priority to another. Sometimes it means that we change programs or we reallocate funding from one priority to another. And sometimes it means simply, like we have done this year, that we need to go out to the community and find out if they are interested in continuing to support existing services or add a level of service to a program that doesn't already exist. So the general, the six-year forecast looks good. And we'll be talking about the six-year forecast for utilities in the longer discussion around the city's budget. So that is the end of the presentation for the mayor's recommended budget. And available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do any council members have any clarifying questions of staff at this point before I open this up for public comment? Go ahead, council member.
After six years, I still do not speak all the government lingo. What is enterprise funds?
Enterprise funds are the utility funds. It's just another name for utility funds. It just means that you can only expend money out of those funds that you collect in rates or connection fees. Yep.
We have a special director in charge of that. His name's Kirk. The, the, thank you, okay. All right, are there any other clarifying questions? You know I had to, right? Okay. All right. At this time, I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this matter. Unless the council wishes to impose a different limitation, there will be a three-minute time limit on each speaker. Your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your area of residence or association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful of all speakers and the hearing procedure itself. Please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the mayor and the council. It is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. I turn to Clerk Wykoff. I was going to call you Judge Wykoff, I don't know where that was coming from.
I don't do that. You'll be inside that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the, in the seats out there, Teresa? Okay, Susan? Staff? I see nobody here that would like to speak this evening, and so I'm going to turn back to the council. Do any council members have any additional questions that they would like to ask of staff? All right, saying none, I'm going to close the public hearing. This is the conclusion of the public hearing unless there are objections. Pause. Okay, this hearing is now closed. All right. So you, as noted earlier in the presentation, the, this item will come back forward to you in the future. And we're moving on to consent. So I turn to the council. Councilmember Hanford, you're closest to the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I was moving his hand.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Beaumont to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is item eight point one, automated traffic safety cameras. And Mr. McCorkle will be presenting on this one. Mr. McCorkle.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Today's item is regarding ordinance zero zero seven, two thousand and twenty-four. It is attached in your agenda packets, and this would repeal ordinance number zero zero six, two thousand and twelve, eliminating the requirement to hold an advisory vote on any ordinance that authorizes the use of automated ticketing cameras. Adoption of ordinance number zero zero seven, two thousand and twenty-four does not necessitate that the city must move forward in implementing automated traffic safety cameras. Council already approved first reading on October eighth of this ordinance, but as required by the city of Monroe's council rules and procedures, the city council must read an ordinance twice before adoption. With that, I will hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you. I turn to the council. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to approve ordinance number zero zero seven slash two thousand and twenty-four, repealing ordinance number zero zero six slash twenty twelve, eliminating the requirement for an advisory vote on any ordinance authorizing the use of automatic ticketing cameras, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fulcher for the requested action under eight point one, under unfinished business. And as shown on the screen, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Scarborough.
Do we agree that in doing this, when we go to adopt traffic cameras of some kind, that we will discuss where they are and where they will not be?
All this does is it removes the requirement for an advisory vote. Any, there will be subsequent action at the council's direction. Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
No, just same comment as last week. I, I don't understand why we're removing this. I mean, part of this, what we put it in was exactly for, communicates a data point. I know that we can make the decision without an advisory vote. Everybody knows we can make the decision without an advisory vote. The whole idea behind it, back in the time when I was sitting up here when we adopted, there was a multitude of reasons, and one of them was is because the community didn't feel like they were being listened to, very much like tonight, or communicated with. That was one of the items that we put in, that that would be a data point that the council would use if there was to be further action in the future. So I, I, I will not be voting in favor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I show that the people voting against are Councilmember Scarborough and Councilmember Campbell. Was there anybody else voting against? Okay, motion passes five-two with Councilmembers Campbell and Scarborough voting against. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is council report. So I'll start off with our remote colleague, Councilmember Fisher.
Well, since I'm on Zoom and you can't see my face because I can't get my camera to work, I'm going to say nothing to report. I'll have lots to report next time, though.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Campbell. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaumont.
I wasn't expecting that, thank you.
I tried to bounce around on purpose.
You got me. So I, we just had a really good P three committee meeting this evening with council or committee members, Walker and Fisher. And I'll let them talk, I'll let Councilmember Walker talk about that if he'd like, but got a great presentation on the parks trail plan, and it was really a great meeting. So thank you, Ben, and thank you, Mike. Just wanted to notify everyone that one of the buckhouses was demolished today. Half of it yesterday and half of it today. And that being said, I really appreciate Teresa Willard being here tonight, attending the conference in Walla Walla on her own dime, on her own time. And boy, do we need a certified local government or some kind of protection for our historic homes. This was absolutely sickening. I cried yesterday, I cried all day today watching it come down. I really thought we could save those houses. One is still standing. We've just got to save and protect some more of our historic buildings before more of them come down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you for putting the dollar-figure graphic back into the budget. I always appreciate that. And also looking forward to the, it's next week that we are doing the tour, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. And do we know which one we're on yet? I haven't seen an email, but. Awesome, okay, see, thanks, thinking ahead. All right, that is all, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Just wanted to say I would also be really interested in learning about the CLG process. I think it sounds really cool, and Monroe's got a lot of history to protect. So I would love for that to come back at some point to learn more about it. Tended the Snohomish County Cities Dinner last week and heard a presentation on organized retail theft. That was really interesting. I just wanted to say I appreciate all the, all the folks that came out tonight. Can only wish that there was. I, I just appreciate the public comment because at the end of the day, I know that that's all, that's what we all want is a, is a community feedback to, to make these decisions. So any attendance, comments, I, I always appreciate it, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Feeding off of Councilman Walker's comments, maybe somebody can tell me, when is it that we discuss the concerns about this ordinance or this zone change of these people's concerns that were brought up tonight? Obviously, we're not doing it now, but is there a time when it gets done?
Yeah, so this is coming back November seventeenth, Lance? Twelve, thank you, it's seven, two in my head. Yeah, okay. So it's coming back November twelfth for a public hearing. And then after that, you would have an opportunity to do deliberation over it, which would include those areas. Is that be correct, Lance?
Yeah, so that, that's something that's really important, and, and I do appreciate everybody that came out tonight, but there is a process for a reason. So you do the public hearing and the public comments, and then it's not a foregone conclusion that you're going to go ahead and approve the plan that's been brought forward, right? So the fact that there are people here today shows that the process is working. And granted, it would have been better during public hearing just for, you know, record-keeping purposes, but, you know, it's on record, so we can find it in the future. But you'll have that opportunity to discuss it. You don't need to approve what's been brought forward. You have the ability to make amendments to it. There may be some additional work or some things we need to talk about when it gets to CEPA and things like that, but that stuff staff will be able to address on the twelfth. Do you disagree with any of that, Lance or Deborah? Okay, cool, thanks.
So the discussion on the twelfth, we will not vote on the twelfth, we will just talk.
That's a good question. What will the ask be on the twelfth? Lance, can you come on up to the microphone since? Thank you. Okay, Jody's saying it's just public hearing.
Yeah, we're just taking public comment, and then we'll come back to council with an ordinance at a subsequent meeting.
And at that time, they'd be able to provide direction, like do something different with that, that neighborhood and that kind of stuff.
Yes, and, and that discussion could certainly happen on the twelfth of November.
So the discussion on the twelfth and the vote about it a week later or two weeks later?
Whatever, I don't know what the schedule would be.
Okay. And so is there a deadline by which the ordinance needs to be adopted? Just because I know that there are deadlines.
By the, by the end of the year.
Okay.
So why does it have to be adopted by the end of the year? If there's, if there's continued discussion that isn't satisfactory during those timeframes, why does it have to be done by the end of this year?
The, we have a deadline by the state to have it, to have it adopted by the end of, the end of this year.
And based on some of the conversations we had last week, the county's admonition to us that it has to be X is just a guideline. And if we don't make it, then what we're subject to is possibility of losing grant money. And if you, if you approved it on the tenth of January, would we be jeopardizing our ability to get grant money between the first and the tenth? And then after the tenth, if we adopted it, it was satisfactory to the county, would we be out of jeopardy at that time?
Technically, yeah. And I, and I don't know if we have any outstanding grant applications or grant needs that that would affect. I could, I could find out.
Okay. And my, my point is, and my questions or my, my comments are, I don't like hearing the information and then being asked to vote on it at the same time. I want time to think about it. I want time to ask questions, and I want time to receive answers. And then if, if the timeline so affords me that, I'm okay with it. You know, and so if by December third, we've got, we've had questions, we've had answers, we've asked questions, you've provided answers, or we've looked at options, then I'm okay with having it done by the thirty of December this year. If not, then I wouldn't be voting for it at that time. I just, I just need to hear answers on things. I mean, I heard tonight, we keep talking, I keep hearing Hoserland's property. And I know there's twenty-two acres up there. Is that part of the consideration in having land available that suits the county's request as opposed to making that, that neighborhood change? And I don't have an answer to that. And those are, that's the kind of thing I want an answer to. And I want to know, we talked about the property at the other end of town by the roundabouts at five twenty-two, and, and developing that property. Is that property in the consideration to the county of things we can develop to meet their, their numbers that they request? I'm not sure I've heard an answer to that. If the answer is yes, I understand it, but I don't know if it is. So those will be the kind of questions I would have.
So what I would encourage is this, is that council members reflect on what you heard tonight. I would encourage you to just go ahead and, and, you know, if you have any questions, go ahead and write up those questions. Send them to me and to Deborah and to Lance and Kate. And what I anticipate is going to happen from tonight's meeting and also from the public hearing from, I think it was last week, you know, it was last week, is that staff is going to be working on sort of a Q and A, taking the questions that we've received and having responses. Just like I said tonight, eminent domain, which we heard from at least two people. We're not talking eminent domain here, but we are talking the change as people sell their property. If they sell it to somebody who wants to, to develop it for one of these uses, we are talking about a change in a neighborhood. And so we want to make certain that we get the facts out to people so that, you know, so that they're, so they understand what's going on and also that you understand what's going on. And it's the same thing, too, is if the council decides not to have commercial at that location with residential, what does that mean for the employment numbers? And can we identify an alternative location for that? And if so, what does that mean in the process that we're in right now? Do we need to redo the environmental review that's already been done? And that kind of stuff, those are the sorts of things we want to make certain you have answers to. So again, today is the twenty-second. You're talking about, if it's December third, that's six weeks from today. Decision just needs to be made by December thirty-first. We've got a couple other Tuesdays in December as well, and we have the ability to do special meetings if we need to. So Lance, do you have anything else you want to clarify from what I've said or add to?
I don't.
I saw a flag going up, Councilmember Walker? And, and just one other thing, too. This is intended to be council report, so one thing that I want to avoid doing is getting too deep into this. So let's just keep that under advisement as we're talking about this. I want to get your answers to you, but at the same time, I'd rather add something to next week if we're going to have more substantive, you know, more substantive questions than, Councilmember, you're fine, than what we've just done. And I don't want to enter into deliberation this evening since it's not on the agenda. So Councilmember Walker?
Are you telling me questions?
So far, you're fine.
Will be answered next week?
No, probably by the twelfth. November twelfth, I would expect there to be answers, if, if not sooner, but November twelfth, when the, when this comes before the council. Lance, do you agree?
It'll be a mixed bag. We'll have some on the twenty-ninth and others on the twelfth.
Okay, there you go. Anything else? You still got the board?
In talking to Councilwoman Heather here before the meeting, one of the things that was clarified to me from her, and I heard referred to by one of the people here, is that it's not putting in apartments. It's, it's not, it's mixed use instead of, instead of multi-use. And I think that needs to be clarified. And the other question is, you had a couple people here who made the comment of, we go down here to have our hair done, our nails done, which tells us there's already businesses in the residential area. Is what they're doing correct, or does that need to be corrected?
So what I, what I thought I heard on that was that putting one of those uses in that area isn't something they would expect people to want to go to. I didn't hear that those are existing uses.
Well, I heard a little differently. I did hear that, but I also heard, I thought I heard somebody say, I go down there to have my hair done, I go down there to have my nails done, like, like there's businesses already in residence down there. I don't know the answer.
Okay, so again, feel free to email. And then Councilmember Scarborough, if you'd prefer to have a meeting with staff just to go through your questions, we can arrange that as well. Same thing, perfect. It's the same thing with all the other council members. If for some reason the email doesn't work and you'd like to just go back and forth, we want to make certain we're answering the questions, okay? Councilmember Walker, did you still have your flag up?
I was just going to say, I, I would appreciate if there were any sort of alternatives, of alternative sites that could be presented in the information.
alternative sites that could be presented in the information next week or the week after that, just because considering the, the NEPA review process, I wouldn't want staff to be.
SEPA.
Sorry, I hear NEPA and SEPA all the time.
Yeah. We don't want to say NEPA, that's a lot of, that's a huge process.
Okay, SEPA. I just would, I would hate for those decisions not to come up until the middle of December or late September, September or December, sorry. NEPA, SEPA, December, that's all.
Perfect. Thank you, councilmember Hanford. Go ahead.
Yeah, I concur with having the options available at the twelfth meeting if possible. And then one question I had was, is there a reason that, like when you're doing, you see the signs up proposed land use action that are posted into the ground? Is there a reason that we're not putting those up in this scenario?
I'll turn to staff to answer that one.
Yeah, so those, I'm trying not to take anybody too deep in the weeds. Those are for specific property actions. So if you've got a, it could potentially be an administrative action, or we talked about conditional uses at, at a previous hearing. So if a property has a conditional use, then you'll see that notice. These are legislative actions, so they're, they're wider, they're not just single property, they're, they're for areas. So we typically have not noticed, if you will, in, in that way, individual properties for legislative actions.
It's because you've got a large, a very large area. So we rely on mailers and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, you know, we've talked a lot about the public engagement. We've had open houses, and we've sent out surveys. We, we've had a number of ways that we, that we've done that and advertise it in, in all the ways that we have available to the city, but we have not noticed those individual areas now.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I appreciate your communication earlier, just today about the communication that went out.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I think we're done. Oh, go ahead, councilmember. Could we get his microphone just for the record? Yeah, it's a recording issue.
Yeah, no, it's all good. On that note, we should probably have that just as a reiteration when we're having that public comment, for everyone to see that all the, everything that was done, the history.
Yep, agreed. Thank you, councilmember. All right, anything else on this topic? Again, we'll talk about this some more, and again, I really encourage you, send us the questions, we'll do a Q and A. And again, I'm very happy to volunteer staff's time to meet with you individually to go over things, because this, these are complicated things. It's just like the budget. If you haven't been through the budget before, I know a couple of you have been through multiple comp plans, and so for, it's, it's budget you see every year or every two years now, but this, this is probably the first for a number of you, and we want you to understand what's going on. Okay? Right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda then, and thank you, councilmembers. That's staff and department reports. We're going to start off with the ten point one Finance Department, September twenty twenty-four report. Did I do the wrong one? So I'm saying the right thing tonight? Oh, that's good. So Greg? That's good, because it's usually not the case that, usually it's a mayor. We've got something else to do. Hey, Greg.
Hey, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor, thanks, council. So you have in front of you the, the finance report, or let's see, can we pull it up, or is it, I guess it's just in your packet, is there any questions about the finance report for, for the month?
Do you, councilmembers, have any questions on the finance report? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Economic Development Report, August, September, October twenty twenty-four with Patrick Ardi, or is it Administrator Knight?
Is Patrick, and he's online.
Oh. Patrick, we're promoting you. Don't get comfy, we're going to demote you right when we're done. Patrick, you're online.
Yes, yes, I'm just joining. I hope you can see me. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So I can have the report brought up if you'd like, or I can just quickly summarize that.
Let's do a quick summary.
Yeah, okay, sure. So as you have in your packet, there have been, since the later August and early, into early October, we, the Economic Development Advisory Board has met four times, and we've talked about everything from the proposed downtown commercial zoning amendments, the strategic.
Well, he froze. Patrick, you're frozen.
You, Master Trails Plan was missing the Fylons area, Fylons area, legislative priorities were discussed, and of course, the presentation of Proposition One. They have subcommittees, as you know, the Downtown Industrial and North Kelsey Subcommittee have all met from two to three times during this period. And then regarding my activities, I've continued to work with Lowe's representatives regarding our North Kelsey properties. We start, we had an actual North Kelsey merchants meeting. The first one on the twelfth of September was not attended by anyone, but luckily on the tenth of October, we had about five or six representatives of businesses in the area. We've continued with our downtown merchants group meetings, and some ideas have come out of that regarding potential events. We've also addressed some of the concerns that have been raised, you can see there. We will very shortly be distributing a permitting survey that has gone through EDAW, and the mayor's had a chance to look at it. The business newsletters have gone out, and we just started, basically this week, our fly market winter tourism promotion campaign that you all approved the receipt, a receipt of the Port of Seattle grant for, and have gone out to the public, which we'll continue to do, with the idea of an adopt a planner program for Main Street. So that's my quick summary, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, any questions? Go ahead, customer moment.
Thank you, Patrick. I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I was wondering how the downtown merchants group meetings are going?
Well, it's been a slow start, as I think a lot of times these things can be, but the last meeting had the most people, and there were about a dozen people present, that's including staff, so maybe, maybe eight merchants were represented versus the early days of three and four. So I think we're starting to pick up. I think we've, we've recognized that letting folks know in the notice what's going to be talked about, what was talked about last time can be more engaging, so we're going to start doing that for the November meeting.
Do you think that there is value in council member attendance at some of these to answer potential questions or anything like that, or just have a presence there as support?
I think that's something we can talk about. I'd say, just in these earlier days, it's only the fourth, it'll be the fifth month, we're trying to be as light on staff as possible so that they feel that it's more their meeting, but I think that definitely as we move forward and have bigger groups and more questions, it would make sense to, to entertain that, yeah.
Great, thank you. The second question I have for you is regarding the winter tourism promotion campaign. What's happening with that? If you could share, maybe when are you rolling that out? Snow's about ready.
Well, it's, thank you for the question, and it's a good segue, because we hope to roll it out tomorrow. We have developed a website that's specific to this campaign, and we will be posting our first social media post that we will geo-fence and boost for the San Francisco Bay Area.
Do you have the website name? I'd love to check it out.
Entice people to consider traveling or to, or just to be in the mountains and play in the snow and use Monroe as their home away from home base camp. So we will start that tomorrow, knocking on wood as I say that, hopefully no glitches will come up, you know how it is with new websites, but should be tomorrow for sure this week. And once, actually, what I can say is that once I know that's working, I can send an email out to council.
Fantastic.
Check it out.
Great, thank you for all your efforts, very much appreciated.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick? All right, thanks very much, Patrick.
Sure, thank you all.
We're now going to demote you.
Yeah, please do.
All right, Jacob Roberts next on Public Works Department, October twenty twenty-four report, item ten point three.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Report is in the packet. We've got some knot weed removal going on around town that happened a little bit a while ago. Street tree replanting program and some cause for applause in there, some spill response, and also the system plans and the transportation plans, which were probably an eighteen-month project that I think our staff did in about thirteen months as a group, so we were crammed in there and got it done aligned with the comp plan. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jacob? All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Next item then we have is Police Department Report with Deputy Chief Irving.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Anything?
You should have, you should have your report in front of you. I'll just highlight a couple things. We did have some significant cases this past September involving guns or threatened gun violence. We did make arrests in all those cases, and we continue to investigate them in the hopes of having successful prosecution moving forward. The other item I will highlight is the Target Zero Teen Program. Greg Robertson's participating in that, and I think that's an excellent program for us to participate and educate children in impaired driving, distracted driving, speeding, and under strain occupants before they meet us at the side of their door getting a ticket. So that's all I have to report. Turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Any questions for the Deputy Chief? Go ahead, councilmember Walker, and then councilmember Scarborough.
I want to say you look like you stepped out of the dry cleaner today, and your badge looks really shiny, so thanks for.
You bet, appreciate that.
You're not wearing your gold buttons, though. All right, councilmember Scarborough?
Hi, thank you for this. This is a very, very nice publication, and it's very interesting. The picture's worth a thousand words, so thank you for that.
You bet. Staff went to a lot of good work on it, so appreciate it.
All right, any other questions, comments? Good jokes about his uniform? Okay, thank you very much, Deputy Chief. All right, next item on the agenda then is item eleven point one, the City Administrator Report, Extended Agenda with Administrator Knight. Administrator Knight?
Thank you, Mayor. There you go. Jody mentioned earlier in the evening that the slide would be coming up that showed when councilmembers were supposed to be scheduled to take the tour. I thought to myself, I hope she updated that slide, which she did, so thank you. So the group for the City Hall tour, we've divided council up into two groups, and so there is one tour that is starting at three thirty, and that is Scarborough, Fulcher, and still a space available if anybody would like to take it.
Councilmember? Go ahead.
And at four o'clock, there is councilmembers Beaumont and Walker, space available.
Thank you, councilmember. So assuming it's about this, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Yes, I'll claim the four o'clock spot.
Yes. Many joys.
Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to claim the other spot? All right. Go ahead, councilmember.
No offense, it just works better.
I'll send an email with the council.
Oh, a text.
There is a special meeting scheduled for that evening, starting at five thirty P. M. Dinner will be served. The discussion item is the Monroe twenty forty-four comprehensive plan update. So as Director Bailey mentioned, that may be an opportunity to get additional information about some of the questions the council asked this evening. We do have unfinished business, which is the ordinance amending municipal code for downtown commercial with Amy Bright, and then Mayor and City Administrator Reports. Our meetings for November fifth will be canceled since that is election night. I'll be watching closely. City Administrator Reports. Just a picture of the campus improvements that you won't get on your tour next week. This is the aerial view, and you can see that the roof installation is expected to be complete in the coming weeks, right before the major winter weather is set to arrive. And the covered roof is the reason that we were able to schedule the City Hall tour for council on the twenty ninth. So really excited about how the project is progressing and looking forward to seeing the inside of the building. We'll schedule other tours as the work continues on the inside. I think it'll be great to be able to get out there once a quarter and take a look at it. And then also, I sent out an email earlier in the week regarding the Snohomish County Tomorrow General Assembly. If you are interested in attending, just please contact Liam McCorkle, and he can get you registered for that. It's going to be held at the Rose Hill Community Center in Muckeltoe. So just an FYI, it starts at five forty-five P. M. That's it.
All right. Any items for the City Administrator Report? Any questions? All right, thank you. Ready to go on to the Mayor's Report, eleven point three, and a couple items. One, at your location, at your, I passed this out. What we'd like to do, not all the time do we have everybody's signatures on there, this is one where we felt it was important to have everybody's signatures. This is a letter that tells the Supreme Court that the current thought that would take our public defender costs from a couple hundred, yeah, two hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars annually would be a significant financial burden on our city. While we do support people getting proper public defense, we acknowledge that, one, there's not enough attorneys, and, two, this would be a very, very, very significant financial impact on our city that would cause the council and the mayor to try to determine how we would reduce costs in different areas to be able to have the public defenders. One of the things that I, I learned about is, at a public meeting last night, is that if there aren't public defenders, that it makes it difficult for us to go through a prosecutorial process. So that was something that I hadn't thought of. So the, the issue here being that if we have too many people that require public defense and not enough public defenders, it puts us in a weird position of not being able to enforce our laws. So, because you can't take people to court if they're not represented. So some of that language, something to that effect, is embedded in this. I would ask you to just take a look at it, make certain you're comfortable having your name added to it. We will bring the paper copy of this to the council meeting on the twenty ninth. Is anybody going to be absent on the twenty ninth, one week from today? Okay, councilmember Gamble, do we have your electronic signature? Okay, can we use your electronic signature for this? Okay. And then, so if anybody else ends up happening to be absent because of illness or something else comes up, just let us know if it's okay to use your electronic signature so that we can have that ready to go. Any questions about that item, and then I'll move on to the next one. Councilmember Hanford, you guys see your light on? Did you have a? Nope, okay. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a chance that I'm absent, and you can definitely put my signature on it. So we'll figure that out, and I'll give you the updates as the week goes on.
Clark Wyckoff, do we have his? Okay, we've got your signature, so if you're, if I'm getting a yes, go ahead from you and from councilmember Gamble, we will add your names to the document that the rest of the council members and I will sign in person next week.
Please, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on my little list. This afternoon, I met with the Snohomish County Drug Task Force. They wanted to go over some of the activities that they're involved in here in Snohomish County. It is an inter-agency task force. There are a couple officers on the task force who are actually from different cities that participate in this full-time. There are also members of ATF and FBI and other, other organizations that are part of the task force. They focus on stopping drug sales here in our community. They also do some things around illegal firearms and, and things along those lines. So it was nice meeting with them to understand what they're doing here in Snohomish County and to understand what sort of resources can be shared with the City of Monroe. One of the things that I noticed on the list was that the City of Monroe does not have an officer assigned to that. I would be reluctant to do that right now while we still have, we were down to one vacancy, now we're down to, I think we're at two vacancies, Deputy Chief? Two vacancies right now? So I'd be reluctant to send somebody right now, given where we are with filling our own needs at the city. But it is something that if the criminal justice sales tax does get adopted at the county level, that if the revenue supports it and we are fully staffed here at the city for our own purposes, that it might be something that we might consider doing so that we can have one of our officers participate in that, which, while they wouldn't be available for patrol here in the city by participating in the task force, it gives us the ability to help bring those resources here, because we have a member on the, the task force. It just gives us more, more close knowledge of what's going on and the ability to bring resources here. So that may be something that if the criminal justice sales tax passes, that we may discuss in twenty twenty-five. So just sharing that with you. And then the last item is that I did meet with a property owner in downtown, in the downtown neighborhood. Earlier today, the person was expressing concern about a neighbor's accessory structure that was built on their property. on their property. The structure is a detached garage that is pretty tall and that is a pole building, which is a metal-sided building. The person was expressing concern about the city not protecting historic properties, which a couple of you have spoken about tonight. As you're aware, the city doesn't have sort of design standards and we certainly don't have a historic preservation overlay zone or anything like that. So what I did was I recommended that while we can't really do anything about the existing structure that's been put there, I'm assured by the, by the staff that it was done according to code, that if the person is concerned about these sorts of buildings popping up in, in a more historic neighborhood, that they should come and share those thoughts with the council since it's a policy choice. And so I just wanted to make you all aware of that conversation. And again, it's my job to inform people when something is a policy choice and make certain that I'm enforcing the laws that the council has, has approved. So if you've got any questions or concerns about that, please let me know. All right? Any questions, concerns? Any good jokes? I, we are now going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the 2025-2026 Recommended Biennial Budget Presentation and Discussion with Administrator Knight.
Thank you Mayor, Council. The first six slides of this presentation are basically a recap of what was shared with the council during the public hearing. So Jody, if you just want to scroll through those slides, I think if we can get to slide six, that's where the, there we go. Oop, non-departmental. Yep, excellent. And, oh, Councilmember Beaumont, I didn't bring your marked up copy of the budget book. Would you like that one back or would you like a clean copy back? We haven't incorporated your comments back into it yet. Okay. Put it down. I'll. I'm kind of a hard copy person. Just makes it easier to follow along, I think. So the purpose of this discussion is basically to walk council and community members through the Mayor's Recommended Budget, starting on page 36, which is, you know, after the kind of introductory pages that we've been through now a couple of times during the public hearings. So if you want to follow along in your budget book on page 36. Starting with the, with the non-departmental, the intent is to just explain, you know, what the department does a little bit, number of employees that the department has, and then the goals that the department is hoping to accomplish and anything else of merit worth sharing. So under non-departmental.
Just a second. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
You're following along with the, with the electronic copy of it? Okay. You got them there? Okay. I was gonna say, because I can show you which page it is too in the hard copy budget. So the non-departmental fund is being used to transfer $276,828 from the general fund to pay for the portion of the Public Works Building that was built. I think the debt service was in 2016. I think it was actually finished when, after I arrived in 2018. So it's the, it's the general fund portion of that building. The remainder of that building is, debt service is being paid for out of the, out of the utility funds or enterprise funds, term for today, enterprise fund. So a portion of that is principal and the rest of that is interest. So on the next page, page 87, is the Executive Department Budget. That includes the Mayor, the City Administrator, and our management analyst, Liam McCorkle. So there are three FTE total. I think this is one of the errors that we found. I think it still says two FTE in the head count. So that'll be something that we'll be updating between the recommended budget and the final budget. But key goals for the Executive Department for '25 and '26 are legislative advocacy, economic development, tourism promotion and marketing. And we also facilitate in the Executive Department, the Economic Development Advisory Board, and now the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So legislative advocacy, we've been focused on for the last couple of years, Finnish 522, and then support for state and federal legislative requests. Those include rail safety, park development, and human services funding. We're also going to be part of the team that is going to be supporting the update to the Downtown Master Plan, along with community development, parks and public works, and then implementing the new brand and poll out. So those are the, the primary goals for the Executive Department. So next page. So under Finance, Finance Department provides customer service for City Hall and utility billing. They provide finance and payroll services, accounts payable and accounts receivable. They are really vital in ensuring that the city achieves its long-range goals. I mean, clearly we have to have a strong, stable finance department and a finance director that's able to kind of look ahead and achieve some of those things that the City Council is focused on in the long-term. The team has 4.29 FTE. The utility billing clerk is actually charged to the utility enterprise funds. So that position supports those utilities and so that position is paid for out of those utilities. We are currently interviewing candidate for the Finance Director position and the Finance Manager position previously held by Greg Pylund. Greg's replacement will be starting on November 4th. So we are in the process of rebuilding our Finance Department and I feel grateful that we won't have a budget to do next year. So we'll have an opportunity for that team to kind of coalesce again. So the goals for '25 and '26 include issuing the debt for that wastewater treatment plant, CIP 5. So you approved tonight on the consent agenda $31 million in expenditures. And so the Finance Team will be issuing that debt. Assisting with funding a future police station. So included in the budget is an analysis of the existing City Hall campus to determine whether or not we can rearrange some things on campus, potentially move some other services off-site, and keep the police station on the municipal campus. So that is included in the budget. And then the, assisting the Public Works with their next utility rate study. So I mentioned that earlier during the public hearing. We will be looking again at rates starting in '25 and potentially then adopting a new six-year rate structure beginning in '26. So next slide. So for Human Resources, there are 2.8 FTE. A portion of the director's salary again is charged to the utilities since our director does labor negotiations and other work, obviously, for those staff members that are supported by the utilities. They're responsible for recruiting and hiring, retaining a productive and well-qualified workforce. The things that you may be less aware of is they also manage the city's risk management program. So they are responsible for, if there are accidents occur or damage to city property, they're the ones who are overseeing our risk management program. They also support the Civil Service Board, the LFO Board, and the Salary Commission. So in addition to their other duties, they also take on supporting those boards. Major goals for the department are implementing the new NeoGov modules. That's the module we currently use for recruiting staff members. And we're going to be adding two modules in the Mayor's Recommended Budget for performance evaluations and policy tracking. So this is to ensure that all of our employees are seeing all of the appropriate policies, that they're seeing them on a regular basis. That helps with risk management in the long run. And then collective bargaining with the guild will occur in 2025. And then they took on, in 2024, the Human Resources Department took on our communications and outreach program as well. So when Rich Heedner left us, that program had been in the Executive Department and it moved over to HR. And so Ben and his team are currently overseeing our communications contract with Mojo. So much of the outreach that you have seen, both on our website, our social media, Monroe This Week, that all comes out of that team. I have to give kudos to the Police Department. I think this year's annual report is probably the best I've seen in my time here. And every year that report just gets better and better. So kudos to that team as well. I just think we're raising the bar across the board with communications. And still there's more to do, as we heard tonight, right? There's just never enough communications. People just get things in so many different channels these days. It's really important that we continue to support that communications contract because it really has, I think, helped us get the word out about city initiatives in a way we haven't been able to do before. So next slide. So for Police, Police have 44 FTE. Almost half of what is on the general fund. And that includes the command staff, commissioned officers, technical and administrative staff. They are working on achieving their accreditation, which is extremely important and time-consuming effort. And I really want to recognize the work that goes into getting that accreditation. They are very close to being complete. It supports the capital facilities investment to meet, meet the needs of community members and staff. So that's, they're part of the team that is working on that facilities plan to figure out what are we gonna, where are we gonna fit the police station on the existing campus if possible? Excuse me. They are ensuring training requirements are met. That's getting to be a bigger and bigger portion of what the Police Department does these days. There's so much required training. I tease the chief from time to time that I think they spend about half their time in training these days. And that's probably not far from the truth. Supporting our K-9 program, we have two Canines that have joined our team. They're currently in training right now and we are monitoring that training closely. We'd like to bring them up to City Council when the time is appropriate and do an introduction. So you'll be seeing that program continue on into '25 and '26. The one thing I think the chief was really forward-looking in, and that was his support for access to mental health, a mental health clinician for both staff for the Police Department and their families. Their mental health is so important for the work that they do every day. And it was really forward-looking and seeing that we needed to invest in that. And it's made a big difference in our ability to attract and retain qualified staff in our Police Department. We're continuing the community outreach team and the embedded social worker program. Council took a look at that contract just recently, that inter-local agency agreement with Snohomish County. And then something that we've really stepped up our efforts on, and again, this is the leadership that's coming from Chief Jolly, and that's domestic violence advocacy. Our previous, previous contract for advocacy wasn't really serving our needs and the chief asked if we could contract with a different group that could provide better service. And it's really made a difference already to community members and the response that we're providing to people that have been impacted by domestic violence and their families. So next slide. This is one branch of government that you'll recognize, is the legislative branch. You're responsible for establishing city goals, priorities, policy, and budget. We do include funding in the Mayor's Recommended Budget for all council members. Oh gosh, thank you so much. You're a gift. Funding for all council members to advocate annually for city priorities in both Olympia and Washington DC. That was something that we talked about, wanting to step up our efforts to develop relationships with other elected officials. It really makes a difference in our ability to be able to achieve the priorities, especially those expensive projects like rail grade separation and rail safety. We just received a complaint from a resident located next to the railroad tracks complaining that we're getting 14 trains nowadays and they're just obviously blowing their horns and it impacts individuals. So yes, trying to figure out how to get that Quiet Train Initiative going. We've worked on that for a while and we continue to support that effort in the Mayor's Recommended Budget. All right, so the Clerk's Office, 1.75 FTE. Jody is our one full-time FTE and then Sherry spends a quarter of her time supporting the municipal court. So she provides backup for court services. The Clerk is responsible for supporting council and mayor, city boards and commissions, and that's done through our department liaisons. The Clerk's Office then also processes city records requests and manages all of our records as well. So key goals for the Clerk's Office are continuing to archive records. We'll have another opportunity when we transition from our temporary facility back to Main Street for archiving our email records, so electronic records. So we'll be looking at that in 2025. Creating the citywide records policy and then cross-training staff on records management. It's so important that when we get contacted and ask for records that we're able to find them fast and efficient. It just saves a significant amount of staff time. I want to give kudos again to the Community Development Department and Leanne Barr for the work that she's done over the past seven years since I've been here really organizing those community development records. It's allowed us to respond much more quickly to customer requests for information. So next slide, Municipal Court. The Municipal Court has 3.45 FTEs. It's the judicial branch of city government. Judge Ness is the executive for the court and she's supported by a court administrator, Pam Haley, clerk, a probation counselor, and court security. That's 0.2 FTE for court security. They, the court, their goals for '25 and '26 include overseeing the city's therapeutic court, which has been highly successful in the community. Judge Ness has really been the lead in making that court as successful as it has been. Operating the Virtual Resource Center to support court clients, looking for opportunities to provide additional probation services. We will have an opportunity to review court security when the court moves into its new facility at the City Hall Campus. So we'll be reviewing court security at that time. And then implementing the new statewide case management system for all courts. So they'll be working on that as well. Parks Operations and Maintenance, there are 11.4 FTEs in Parks O and M. A portion of the staff are charged off to capital projects. And we talk about parks and recreation, but the Parks Department really has taken on a number of additional responsibilities. They support with Katie Darrow, a number of tourism promotion and marketing efforts and city events. It's Katie who coordinates the city's magazine. So that's currently Choose Monroe and it's going to be transitioning to Explore Monroe to be consistent with our new brand. Choose Monroe is actually the Chambers brand and people get confused, business owners do, they call the Chamber when they're upset about something that showed up at Choose Monroe. So we're going to be transitioning to the new brand in 2025. So you'll see that come out in May. They also manage field reservations, recreation contracts, so with Skyhawks and others, the concessionaires, maintenance and repair of landscape medians. You may not be aware, but that's our Parks Department who plants all of those plants and those landscape medians. People comment all the time on how beautiful they look and they love the seasonal change. And then of course, parks and fields, ports. I mean, all of those things are managed by our Parks Department. They plan to purchase a new standing mower to help with managing and maintaining those landscape medians, putting out, as I mentioned, the city's tourism magazines, both Sky and Snow and now Explore Monroe, and then reviewing and revising the athletic field policy. So next slide. For Park CIP, I won't read them out. It's a very long list of capital projects that the Parks Department is going to be working on in '25 and '26. These have been projects that have been on the city's strategic plan for an extended period of time. Some new items to bring to your attention would be an urban forestry assessment. So taking a look at our urban forest and the trees, that's actually going to be a project in partnership with our Stormwater Utility. And a proposed plan update, it seems like we just finished the park and recreation open space plan. It has to be done every six years in order to be eligible for state grants. So that's the reason why we do it on a, on a regular basis. So the other items on that list, I think the council has seen in the past and are very familiar with. Next slide. So Human Services. This was created as a separate line item in order to be able to track investments in our Human Services Program, and that started back in 2020. There is one FTE, Rachel Adams, and she is supported by contracts. So these are the collaborations that we reviewed as part of the partnerships with nonprofit service providers in our community. And they provide, together with the city, that social service safety net for Monroe community members. So a number of items that we are anticipating to work on that are included in the Mayor's Recommended Budget, including recommending human service grant awards. Those are done through the Community Human Service Advisory Board. Allocating opioid settlement funds. The council has approved a number of those settlements and those funds have been coming to the city, so those will be allocated next year. Seeking and securing ongoing funds for transportation services. Seeking and securing ongoing funds for transportation services. This has been a hard nut to crack. It was listed as a gap in our last needs assessment. And we're still trying to find partners in order to be able to provide better transportation, not just in Monroe, but in the Sky Valley as a whole. Seeking and securing funding for peer support and case management in 2026. So, Roger Evans and Donnell Carroll are funded through twenty-five with grant funding. And so, in order to continue that program, we need to look for grant funding in 2026 and beyond. And then, finally, a pilot program from a mental health walk-in clinic. That is kind of a best practice. It's currently being rolled out in other counties, and it's been found to be extremely helpful. Right now, we have mobile mental health, so sometimes we're able to go to people. But this is a clinic, just like you have with an urgent care for your physical health. This would be an urgent care for your mental health. So, allows people to come in and get service right away and address immediate needs and then be referred either to outpatient services or actually then referred to a mental health facility if they need more care than what can be provided within a twenty-four-hour period. So, next slide. Community development. The department has eleven point six FTEs, and they cover planning, building, code enforcement, and economic development. Patrick Doherty's contract is actually managed out of the executive department, but we do that in close partnership with community development. So, a portion of their time is also spent on economic development. Their primary goals are implementing a new permit tracking system, adopting the State Wildland Urban Interface Code, updating Title Twenty-two, the city's unified development regulations to be consistent with the comp plan. They're also doing some cleanup to those regulations as well. Amendments to Monroe's accessory dwelling unit regulations, conversion of buildings for residential use per state law, adopting middle housing regulations, adopting a multifamily tax exemption program. I mentioned earlier, updating the downtown subarea plan that was adopted back in 2008, initiating GMA climate change comp plan amendments, and then potentially a US two commercial subarea plan. So, so much of the work that's done on the planning side of the house is really being driven by state regulations. I mean, the comp plan update that we're working on right now takes two and a half years of our time, and it's totally driven by state regulations. So, next slide. Emergency management. We have a small amount of money set aside. We actually have a kind of cross-departmental team that works on emergency management. That team was responsible for doing our Sound Shake event that happened on ten, was it ten seventeen? I know I should remember that day because it was last Thursday. It wasn't that long ago.
Ten seventeen, at ten seventeen.
At ten seventeen, that's right. So, we do have some requirements for emergency management. There is a countywide group also that meets, and we are required to update our plans on a regular basis. So, this fund is intended to support those efforts. Next slide. Chief Jolly is currently the lead for our emergency management team. Other general fund cost centers, so there's just a few out there. The legal services fund obviously covers our contract with Ogden Murphy Wallace, but it also covers other legal services that we have prosecutor, for example, is included in there. That legal fund is one point seven million dollars in 2025 and 2026. That's up about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from this current biennium and up five hundred thousand dollars since twenty-one and twenty-two. So, when you're looking at that overall budget and you're wondering sometimes, like, what are the cost drivers? And now, legal services are one of the cost drivers. Same thing with JL and Dispatch. Those costs just continue to increase. It's up a hundred and fifty thousand since twenty twenty-four and twenty-five and two hundred and fifty thousand since twenty-one and twenty-two. So, these are kind of non-negotiable services that we have to fund in the recommended budget. And yet, you know, it drives a lot of the costs that we see just kind of across the board. So, next slide, we're on to the current expense funds. So, current expense funds, there are just two to talk about. One is the contingency fund. This has been something that's been important to both the mayor and the council to ensure that our contingency fund is fully funded. We have two options for funding it. One is to use either one month of general fund expenses or the target balance is capped by RCW at thirty-seven and a half cents per thousand of assessed value. We have a policy that we take the lesser of those two. And this year, the lesser of the two was the one month of the general fund. So, that's one point six million dollars that we have set aside in the contingency fund. Next slide. Donations. We're always looking for donations. We do have some people in the community who donate regularly. We do have people who support the K-9 program, for example. The Monroe Rotary Club also supports, for example, National Night Out, Community Egg Hunt. I mean, all of these are things where community members and businesses step forward and support city events that are open to all community members. Next slide. So, special revenue funds. These are sources that are restricted or committed to expenditures for specific purposes other than debt service or capital projects. And that includes the street fund, lodging tax, narcotics enforcement, and the real estate excise tax. So, in the street fund, we support five point eight two FTEs. Revenues and expenditures have remained fairly flat in this fund. It was three point two million in 2025 and 26 versus three point three million in twenty-three and twenty-four. The project that is highlighted in this fund is the traffic signal at one seventy-ninth and one forty-seventh. But obviously, the street fund includes, as it lists on here, maintaining and operating, you know, all fifty-nine miles of asphalt streets, seventy-five miles of concrete and asphalt sidewalks, and eight traffic signals. It's, you know, the day-to-day operations that, you know, keeps the streets safe for community members are paid for out of the street operations and maintenance fund. Next slide. So, street capital. We have two point five four FTE that are charged off to street capital. A portion of our engineering department, for example, is paid for out of streets capital. They're continuing to make progress on priority projects, including traffic calming, sidewalk signals, and crossings. This includes our annual preservation efforts using transportation benefit district funds and grants. Expenses kind of vary based upon the annual capital facilities plan. So, this one doesn't have a trend line, per se. It just kind of varies depending upon what gets included and what's funded by grants. But street capital included, for example, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks. That was paid for out of this, out of street CIP. So, next slide, lodging tax. We collect a dollar per night, per room, both for our hotels and motels. Now, we're also collecting funds for Airbnb and VRBO. The revenues have been increasingly, increasing steadily, but they are limited for tourism, special events to attract tourists, and operations of tourism-related facilities. Fund allocations are recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We're actually in the process right now of reviewing applications. The city receives sixteen applications. The next meeting will consider applications and awards, and that's going to happen this Thursday. So, we will be folding those into the mayor's recommended budget. Hopefully, before second reading of the budget, we'll have exactly the dollar amount for 2025, and then we'll go out and do another round in 2026. Next one, narcotics. Revenues come in from drug enforcement efforts, and they are restricted to drug enforcement efforts and support. And you can see where those revenues are right now. We don't have any expenditures planned out of that fund for twenty-five or twenty-six. For real estate excise tax, there you go. We impose on the sale of property a first-quarter percent of a sale and a second-quarter percent. They can be spent on similar things, but second-quarter percent is a little bit less, is a little bit more restrictive. It can't be spent on municipal buildings or land acquisitions. Revenues obviously have been slowing since interest rates have increased. We've been keeping a close eye on those real estate excise taxes, and we're expecting them to remain flat in twenty-five and twenty-six. The revenues that you see being transferred out of that REIT fund one seventeen and going into other funds include debt service. So, those are the twenty-sixteen bonds in the municipal campus. And Fund Three-O-seven is the interfund loan for the festival lot. Fund Three-EIGHteen is street CIP miscellaneous projects. And then Fund Three-Thirty for the municipal campus includes funding for the municipal campus construction and the site assessment for PD. So, that's that Fund Three-Thirty transfers in from REIT. And then, finally, debt service, which we've covered a couple of times. So, given the late hour, I won't go into that one. You've seen that a few times. Next one, capital improvements. The general CIP, that is the interfund loan payment for the downtown festival lot of six hundred and forty-five thousand. We are going to be working on paying off that loan in 2025. So, we'll be coming back to you with our new finance director and talking more about that with you in the first quarter of next year. Next one, city buildings. I'm not going to read each one of these. They're pretty well laid out in the budget, but city buildings include completing construction of the city hall and the municipal campus. And then, we've talked about the assessment of the police facility at the municipal campus site. I laid out then in the next slide, a couple of slides, the project list. So, you can read there, the Parks capital improvements. We've got about three million of improvements planned for Parks in twenty-five and twenty-six. If you want to see those, you can look on page one fourteen. They're listed in the capital facilities plan. Next slide. For general government, we've talked about the municipal campus, the police station design, and then something we haven't talked about, which is the Village Way HVAC replacement. But again, you can see those. Those are listed on page one fifteen of the mayor's recommended budget in the capital facilities plan. About four million dollars recommended there for general improvements. Next slide. For streets, about five point five million dollars is planned. And again, you can take a look at that list. Those are things that I think council will recognize. They've been on the strategic plan for an extended period of time. And these are projects that are finally being constructed. Some of them obviously will take longer. For example, the railroad right-of-way acquisition and safety improvements. Those are on the capital facilities plan, but don't have a dedicated funding source for them yet. So, Public Works, next one. There we go. So, these are all the water and sewer and stormwater projects and investments in fleet and equipment. And again, you can see those. Those are all listed on pages one fifteen through one seventeen. Those are all the capital investments that we're planning to make and listed on the capital facilities plan. You can see that that's a six-year plan. So, again, as projects are completed, they drop off the list. If funding is available, we continue to look and push those projects out into future years. But that helps the community understand just kind of what the long-range strategy is around investments in the community overall. For the enterprise funds, utility funds. And we operate three. We've got water, sewer, and stormwater. We did adopt a six-year projection model, which I mentioned earlier, is going to be coming to an end. We will be updating that model and coming back to the city council and talking about a new rate structure, six-year rate structure going forward twenty-six into twenty thirty-one. We've talked about the utility rates of four and the proposed increases. Again, these are all available in resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen, and we'll be updating those rates during this biennium. For the water utility, the city receives its water from Spada Lake, and that's via the Everett Water System. The utility has nine point five eight FTEs. Our water system does extend beyond the city limits. We have a hundred and sixty-five miles of pipe and ten reservoirs. The goals that are listed there may seem modest, but the work is significant. Expenditures have remained somewhat consistent over time, and rate revenue is transferred from the capital, to the capital budget to support system improvements. That's pretty much the same for all of the utilities. If you go on to the sewer utility, it's about ten point six FTEs. Next slide. There you go. Sixty-five miles of sewer main, thirteen hundred manholes, and a group of individuals in our Public Works Department that are responsible for water, sewer, and stormwater utility maintenance. So, next slide. The stormwater utility has really been focused on meeting the requirements of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit requirements. It's got eight point five sixty, eight point five six FTE total, about twenty-two hundred catch basins. And again, similar to water and sewer, stormwater utility is responsible for maintaining the entire system. Next one. We talked earlier about our bond reserve fund, looking to have, meet that targeted reserve of between two and three years of payments set aside in that fund. Right now, we have two and a half. Just got to note that somebody's not seeing the slides. Change this maybe.
He's not seeing the slides. Hey, Kyle, can you see the slides online okay?
Yeah, everything's fine.
Copy, thank you.
Internal service funds. So, we have three internal service funds I spoke about earlier, IT, fleet, and facilities. These are some of the funds. The increase in costs around IT, fleet, and facilities are driving some of those cost increases that you see in general fund departments. IT, if you want to go to the next slide. The IT department has three point two FTE. We're beginning to transition some of our contracted services into staff, into staff. So, the information technology, if you take a look at that fund, it has increased about three hundred thousand dollars since twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and about a million since twenty-one and twenty-two. So, that, I think, is really indicative of the investment that we're making in IT infrastructure and just the way that work is changing overall. You know, moving from having potentially more people do more things into having kind of more automation. Next slide. For fleet and equipment, the fleet department maintains, it says, over a hundred and ten vehicles and pieces of equipment, but I also saw a number two hundred and thirty-five, which is quite remarkable. It has two point seven nine FTE. And next slide. City Facility O and M. Again, this group is really remarkable in the work that they do. They provide service to over sixty-five thousand square feet of city facilities, which is quite remarkable. And next slide. There we go. So, the remaining budget schedule. The intent is to be back in front of council on November twelfth to have the final public hearing on the budget and have first reading of the property tax ordinance and first reading of the biennial budget.
All right, thank you very much. Council members, any questions? Okay, we've got a very comprehensive budget here. I'm really, really, really pleased with everything that the staff has come forward to propose for next year and for the year after. And so, look forward to any thoughts you have, any concerns you have, and to our staff and to Deborah especially for putting this together, and Greg for coming in and supporting this effort. I really appreciate all the work that everybody has done. So, anyway, if you've got any questions, feel free to reach out to me, to Deborah, and we can get questions over to the appropriate department directors to get additional information. I'm really happy, though, just letting you know that, again, we're funding all of our reserves. And we're also funding the main needs that we have with all of our departments. And as you all will remember, again, we have a levy lift out for the community's consideration. If it gets adopted, there will be additional positions that we'll bring forward as part of an amendment later on in the process. So, I just want to make certain that that stays on everybody's minds as well, that this is what we can do without the changes. But as you're aware, there are also needs in our parks, and also, we want to be supporting our police services as well. So, anyway, any questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. Deborah, thank you.
Thank you. We do.
Okay. We do have a need for an executive session, and no, I'm not kidding this evening. I do need the citation. I don't have the citation in my agenda. I don't have the citation in my agenda. It's RCW.
Yes, potential litigation.
Say that again, 42? 110? Okay, you said 42, 110, 31, little i? Okay. For an initial, right, for an initial 10 minutes. Okay. So count. Okay. So if, if I could just have a little bit of quiet for a second. So just so that I can announce for the record, we do have a need for an executive session for an initial 10 minutes. It's person RCW 42, 110, 31 subsection, little i for potential litigation.
Yes.
For potential litigation. We will be in executive session for initial 10 minutes. I'll announce when that starts here momentarily. We will make announcements both in this meeting room, if there's a need for an extension, and also we will announce online. Lastly, we do have in our rules that if we're going to go beyond 10 PM, that we will need to vote. So in the event that we feel that we'll need to go beyond 10 PM, we will come out here and vote to extend the meeting before we do that. There is a potential for action to follow if nothing else to agenda the meeting. We're now moving into exec session. Before I do that, I'm going to turn to Zach. Zach, I see your microphone is off. Do you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, I think you encapsulated that very well. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss potential litigation and legal risk with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 42, 31, 10, 1i. You indicated that the executive session would last approximately an initial 10 minutes subject to future extensions. And with that, I think that the statutory requirements are met and the council can convene the executive session.
Okay, so for the record, the citation I provided was not the citation our attorney provided. For the record, it is the citation the attorney provided that is the reason for us moving into executive session. Executive session begins now at 9:32 PM for an initial 10 minutes. Thank you.
The executive session has extended five minutes.
All right, we are back out of executive session. The time right now is just before 9:50 PM. We have no further business this evening unless there's objection. We will be adjourned. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you for your service.